All right then. So, let's call the meeting of the Committee of the Hall open at 8:38 PM. Adoption of the agenda, please. I move that the agenda be voted on and accepted as presented. Seconded by councillor LaLonde, any questions or changes to be brought to the agenda? None? Fine. All those in favour, carried then. Thank you. Declarations of pecuniary interests? None? That's fine. No delegations, no petitions on board? No notices of motion? I'm sorry, I'd like to add a notice of motion. Should we add it formally on the agenda? Or do you accept... Well, simply to mandate the administration to proceed to verification with regard to public speaking contests? Could we assess who could be designated to speak to, or designated to speak to, ratepayers when we're called upon to hold public meetings? And that administration representatives be the most qualified to address the population at large? If we have two or three key individuals that take care of communication, we might tap into those resources. When we present something, a project, to our ratepayers, our ratepayers deserve to have a proper presentation of the facts. I agree. All those in favour? Yes. Fine. Councillor Grimarr, I'm going to prepare a motion to this effect and we'll deal with it at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Question period? None? Do you have any... Mr Grimarr, you're in the room, I can come up with a question concerning my son's situation on Sycamore Street. Now, you worked on ditching along that area during the fall. Have you looked, though, at the Kenan and Forest Hill situation? The town, the city of Ottawa, performed the ditching. Have you seen how deep they went doing that work on the ditching and the water there? I preferred bringing that to your attention. I just wanted to make sure that I understood what the question was. You see, the ditching work, sir, on the corner of Kenan, and I think it was Forest Hill, I don't recall the name of the street, is that where the heavier stone was put in? No, on the corner, on the corner. Yes. I see. I spoke to Adichal Kampu about this, Mr Darsh. He was aware of the situation, as Mr Bowen stated. It's like this huge ditch that they dug. They didn't go about it very well. And the city, I believe, well, Adichal was trying to fix it, looking to fix it. In any event, I didn't go into any further details concerning this. It seems as if the slope is too steep, starting to... And there's water that's continuously pooling in there, about one or two, two, three feet... One to two, three feet of water in there all the time. Well, Richard mentioned this situation to me last time around. Do you have a phone number, Mr Bowen? Well, you asked me if I had a question, then I have one. Yeah, she's got my phone number, she's got my phone number. Well, that's fine. Mr Darsh, one recommendation. Maybe, you know, contrary to what the other Director of Public Works used to do, just jump in your car one day and when you go home, you go by there and go away, stray away from your computer for a tad bit and just take a look at what's being done. Yeah, I could do that again, no problem. It's right next door, in any event. All right. United Counties of Prescott-Russell report. As you know, the next warden is going to be Mr Gary Barton. And he'll take over as of the 21st of December during the evening. So I know someone who's quite happy about this, yes, I certainly am. The Services Committee report. I'd just like to have a... To ask this question. You'd mentioned that we were going to pave over Old Highway 17. That's next year, yes. In 2017, Old Highway 17, from Highway 17 up to Dalier Road will be paved, yes. Could it be possible to go right up to the ferry crossing so that bicycle paths could be put in, right up to the... Well, to the ferry crossing? Well, we could get into this next year. I thought at least that we were promised last year that this stretch was going to be paved over. I was promised that it was going to be done next year. But I'll mention this. I thought that this stretch from Landry to Baseline had been paved over, but had not been paved over in consideration of bicycle paths. But we'll mention this to the individuals involved. Committee reports. Modifications with regards to the operational agreement? Yes. The Committee of the Hall recommends the town council to adopt a bylaw 2016-120, being a bylaw that authorizes the mayor and the clerk to enter into modifying agreement with C.A.S. to modify Appendix 2, as prescribed by report FIN-74. Seconded by councillor LaLonde. Any questions? None? All those in favour, carried then. Thank you. Topographic works on Laurier Street, whereas town council approved an amount of $50,000 for the elaboration of topographic plan for Laurier Street as Phase 1. And whereas, having obtained estimates from three surveying firms, the estimated amount of work is over and above $50,000. That the Committee of the Hall recommend that town council allocate $55,000 to the capital expenditures budget instead of $50,000. And that the Committee of the Hall recommend to town council that the infrastructure and planning department be exempt from going too tender in keeping with Section 7.4 of the Supplies and Services bylaw to give the contract, then, to award the contract to Stantec Geomatics for an amount of $55,000 excluding taxes, as recommended. Seconded by councillor Simonou. Any questions? Well, finally, Stantec was the lowest bidder at 55, is that what you're saying? Yes. So you don't want to go back to tender and will simply give it to them? Yes. All those in favour, then? Carried. I had a question. Question here, Mr Mayor. Councillor Simonou might answer part of my question here. When we performed additional work, we did Laurier Street, and that was in 1994, 22 years ago. We'd looked into that work, well, the topographic survey, you see, a lot of things have changed for the past 22 years, you see, councillor LaLonde, so it's normal to proceed to new topographic survey. For example, taken as an example, councillor LaLonde, the steps leading to the church, the steps were not of the same shape today as they were 22 years ago. So a topographic survey will give us a snapshot of the changes brought about during the past 22 years. Even that building on Edwards Street has undergone changes in the past 22 years. Fine. All those in favour, carried. Heritage designation of the Dumoulin Park complex. Whereas, Committee of the Hall recommends town council approve bylaw 2016-115 on being a bylaw that designates the Dumoulin Park complex as being a heritage site in keeping with the terms or directives set out by the Heritage Act of Ontario. Seconded by councillor Grimarr. I'm not sure if the resolution has been formulated. Are we just designated the park or the structures? Well, I believe we have to clarify. Well, we're... You see, if we're designating the park as a whole, we're quite limited as to the potentiality of developments. My impression was that two structures would be designated as being heritage, but we were not designated the park as a whole as heritage, as a heritage site. Yes, that... You see, there are three structures that they don't want to modify, but nothing prevents us from doing anything else on the park proper. Well, if this park is designated as heritage, if one, you know, puts in an additional... If you displace a rock from one place to another, or if you put in an additional installation, we can't do it. You know, we're in agreement that it be designated as heritage. Mrs Collier, was that looked into if we're... If we have the freedom to do what we wish to do, if the park is designated as a blanket heritage site? We were... We thought initially that this dealt with only three structures. We're told now that the entire park will be designated as heritage site. Mr Darsh might have... Well, some clarification. Well, look, it's designating the whole park as heritage, but it's protecting the three structures, so if council wishes to do something else on the remaining parklands, well, then that's something that can be done. So we'd be able to have that leeway in designating it as such. Yes. So you confirm to us that if we want to put in a new building in that, on that park, that we're not touching the structures themselves? Is it more complicated, though, once it's dedicated as heritage? Or is it the same procedure for the city that's involved? No, I think it's the same procedure that's involved. The essence in this is just to protect those three structures. If council wants to do something else, put in a new building, you know, in the park area within the park, that's something else. So there's nothing preventing the city to build a restaurant complex in there, for example? Or those outhouses? Yes. Washroom facilities, councillor LaLonde. Yes, we can build outhouses if you wish. Look, look, council has flexibility with regards to this. Other than these three structures. And even then, if council elects to do something in there, as I said, there's something we can do. Mrs Collier, we were supposed to have a committee designated to look into this park matter. A long time ago, nothing has been done about this. And I'm just wondering, I'm not pointing at you, but since it's your administration, I'm just wondering if you... And by the way, I can add to that. Residents have contacted me and asked me if the committee had been picked. There are names. Well, council did appoint names, yes, yes. For Park Dumoulin, yes, yes. All right then. Have they been contacted? Well, not yet. We're... We will be... I believe we've accepted all the names, so all of them have been... All of the names have been ratified, and we should call a meeting probably next week or as soon thereafter, as soon as possible. It was discussed one year ago initially. I thought I was going to be called upon to sit on this committee as well as Mr LaLonde, but we don't know which councils or wards are represented in this committee. What's wrong with you guys? Don't you keep up with the news? Check your voice nail. You might have something there as of February the 15th of last year, to this effect. I believe that we plan to have a meeting to deal with those issues as early as the 15th of November. Well, a few of them have gone south up to now, warmer climes, so we thought we'd do something at the beginning of December, but given the budget talks we were involved in, there was a bit of delay. We're close to Christmas time, so we're thinking of doing it as early as possible in January to start up the new year with this. We'll just make sure that we have a meeting set up during the course of the first two months of the coming year. Yes. Could it be possible that I be added as a sitting member on this committee? I don't believe there's any limit called for limiting the number of councillors. Sir, well, I don't see any problems. Maybe Mr Wett, Mrs Wett can... No, Mrs Wett says no. She says a... She's given us a flat no on this. Well... All right, no, no, Mr Mayor. Let me look into this, but I don't believe there's any problem. Everyone in favour, then? Carried. Part lot control regards to the... To a crossing? Yes, that the town council adopted bylaw 2016-160, being a bylaw concerning the designation of a property that is not subjected to water bylaw applied to Block 38, Plan 50M-323, situated within the residential crossing, Clarence Crossing project in Rockland. Seconded by councillor Grimarr. Questions? Oh, I'm sorry. It's because this resolution is written twice, once in English and once in French, and I was confused there, Mr Mayor, I apologise. Well, well, all right. Not easy to follow along sometimes. All right. Any questions, folks? None? All those in favour, carried then. Thank you. Partnership agreement entered into with the school board that the Committee of the Hall recommend that town council adopt a bylaw 2016-161? Fine. Being a bylaw that authorizes Director of Community Services to enter into a signed agreement with the Catholic District School Board of Eastern Ontario for the operation of the before and after-school 2016-2017 program in the St Patrick Grade School in the city of Clarence in Rockland, as recommended. Seconded by councillor LaLonde. And... All those in favour? Carried. Page 33 states that the daycare services has already handed over the 2016 budget to the authorities. Should it not be the 2017 budget? That's... You're reading from the report as it stands, right? That's right. Up at top of that page, the first two paragraphs refer to 2016 data. No, unfortunately, the agreement with St Patrick involved a delay with regard to the signature of the agreement. So the agreement ought to have been signed as of September. But this is contained within the 2017 budget parameters, so yes, the financial impact will be considered as of 2017, yes. The other question I had was with an item on page 39. Those concerned must submit their fees by December 31st. Don't you think we're late in the running here? We've just finished work on the budget. This is the 5th of December now, and they can come up with an amount and they can charge us as of the mid-part of December. I thought that was slated for the end of the year. Well, for each school year, this is what it states. Yes, they have until the end of December. See, school ends as of June, councillor LaLonde, and they have until the month of December of the same year to submit their financial, final expenditures, or final tally, if you wish. I thought that ran too close to the end of the year, but in any event. All right. No other questions? All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Agreement with the United Counties of Prescott and Russell concerning daycare centers? Councillor LaLonde, does the Committee of the Hall recommend that municipal council adopt a bylaw 2016-162, being a bylaw that authorizes the Chief Administrative Officer and Director of Community Services to sign the agreement with the United Counties of Prescott and Russell, as recommended? Seconded by councillor LaLonde. Any questions? All those in favour? Carried then. Just a question here, I might have. I see that we're paying $1.58 per square foot. Is it the same price that we pay for others? Other venues? Well, this is an agreement that was arrived at with the United Counties of Prescott-Russell, so we're talking about $1.58 for the St Patrick School, you know, on a per-square-footage basis. Now, are we alluding to... Well, you see, that is in keeping with the agreement arrived at with the United Counties of Prescott and Russell. I'm not cognizant of all the details with regards to this, with regard to this agreement. I'm saying this because there are nine daycare centers involved, not just one. Well, that's an arrival... That's an agreement that was arrived at between the United Counties of Prescott-Russell and our community. That's an agreement that we're compelled to enter into a signed agreement with before receiving any money. So the United Counties of Prescott-Russell proceed in that particular fashion. Fine. All those in favour? Carried. Councillor Simonou, we're dealing now with your department. Appointment for a member of the advisory committee? Well, that the Committee of the Hall recommend that Mrs Carol Julienne be named as a member of the advisory committee for the, for Dog Park, as recommended. Look, we attend meetings of our committees. Look. Look, there are some benches that need to be added to that park, by the way. Any questions? All those in favour? Carried. How about your discretionary budget, councillor Zandt? Could you make use of that to install a few benches? Look, let's go on now to a transfer of reserve funds for emergency work to be performed at the Clarence Creek Arena. That's the next... Well, that the Committee of the Hall recommend that town council authorize the transfer of $13,000 plus HSD to the Clarence Creek Arena to pay for emergency repair work that was performed on the compressor, as recommended. Seconded by councillor LaLonde. Questions? Councillor LaLonde, no questions, but congratulations to you, Mr Mayor, members of your team. The work that was performed over the weekend, well, I've received positive comments. Unfortunately, we lost a day and a half worth of ice rink use, but it would have been much, a much longer period of loss of ice rink use if that work would not have been performed. Fine. All those in favour? Carried. Purchase of a used grader. That the Committee of the Hall recommend that town council authorizes a maximum amount of $280,000 for the purchase of a used grader, along with necessary accessories that meet the criteria set out by the city of Clarence in Rockland, and that this amount be financed by the debt, and be it also recommended that an exemption of Section 98.0 be granted to greenlight the purchase, and that the call to tender INF-2016 be voided to allow that this be done. Seconded by councillor Grimarr. Congratulations to members of our staff for having come up with a used grader. I don't believe they found one yet, right? Which leads me to the next question. Are we restricted? Like, we're not restricted, like Alberta? I know I've checked, I know it's internet, but they seem to have, I don't know what happened down there. The oil prices went down, in any event. There are, there's a, there are tons of them available. Well, I thought we had one in Timmins available, made available to us. I think that we went out to a number of places, and I guess the one that we got the most responses from was Machinery Trader. And we've been dealing with, I'm not going to get the title right, but anyways, an agent with, an agent, we, we are, we have, we've looked at 30 potential vehicles, but what we've done here is that we want to make sure we're getting good value for our dollars. So we've sculpted with parameters, you know, specs. I think that what's important here is that we get something that has reasonable age, and the most important thing is the number of hours on it. We said no more than 5,000 working hours. That translates to about two and a half years' worth of usage. Yes, that's... I find this number high. Look, I brought this detail to council's attention. I've printed out seven or eight 2012 graders with 1,400 hours, used for $160,000. I know they're out west, but you grab somebody that offers spring trailering services, and there are extremely worthwhile possibilities to look into outside of Ontario. I've even looked... Well, you see, there's no question when we looked at this, there's a wide range of vehicles available, wide range. It's, it, you see, we're asking that it be winter-ready that causes increase in cost. If these were used on oil fields, they're not going to have a plough on it and things like that. So, well, the ones I'm referring to had plows. I think that what we're looking for this evening, we're seeking authority to go ahead with those three items that were identified in the report. Just there, we're setting aside 100 grand with what you're proposing. If we're able to get a vehicle, I think we're asking for that upset limit of $230,000. We want to make sure it meets our specs. One of the key things is that we want to go and see it. We've talked to them, we want to see it, however. Well, as, well, we could do the same thing with the library. No, come on. What, we can try and get good value for the vehicle. We're obtaining, and if we're not successful, we'll get back to you then. How's that? We shall be successful. Look, I spoke to J.R. Brison 10 days ago. You know, they're the outfit that's on Highway 17, and Gilbert over there says they take a look at lists continuously of those second-hand graders that are available, and I would give them a call. Speak to Gilbert, and she might have some worthwhile information for you. Look, we're not limited to, you know, look, these folks have contacts with all of the big salespeople involved in this type of machinery, J.R. Brison. Well, what council will do is if you approve this report as read, we will be resetting that tender call that we have in the works right now, so that will be gone. And then we have to make sure that we have a good quality vehicle that meets our specs. Is everybody in favour, then? With this? Fine, let's go on. Questions for department heads? That's what we're into now? Questions to department heads? A question? I know that the white line at the corner of Saint Jean and Laurier, south of Laurier, we pushed back the white line, the stop line, and immediately, that same night, logic bus, a logic bus was coming over, and they couldn't make it because there was a car parked, two cars coming out. They didn't pass the white line, they were behind the white line, and then the day after, a truck damaged the pole right there at the corner. Was there much damage over there? Are there, are there people that fixed it? I don't know, I'd have to talk to staff about that and give you a little bit of a status report on that if you want, but I'm not familiar with the specifics. The sooner we can meet with Canada Post, the better. Because you see, every, every truck doesn't have to be a big tractor-trailer that negotiates that turn, but dump trucks also have a hard time. You're saying that the stop bar is too far back? No, it's not pushed far up enough, really. Look, we're talking about a 10-foot leeway. I was a bit disappointed. I said, "Well, maybe they'd have a bit of difficulty in stopping." We also have the same situation, by the way, folks, on Caron. Caron is a, is a little bit at an angle, and we have bigger vehicles doing the same thing, turning left onto Laurier. They have the same problem, you see. So next year, we'll have to take a look at that and probably address that situation as well. Well, see, they're on Laurier, turning left on Caron. I see. You see, when they go eastbound, turning right, well, they go westbound, turning south on Caron. I see. Well, actually, the bus literally comes over, takes over, and waits until all of the cars on Laurier back up in order to make the turn, just because it's on that angle, you see. So, I was going to say, we have to be careful because last time they backed up a line, they backed it up further than the sensors underneath. Yes, everything goes in together, but the one on Saint Jean was maybe, could have been backed up a little bit more. I agree. Any other questions, councillor Grimarr? I'd just like to thank Mr Darsh's department. We had a stop that went missing at the exit of YMCA in the Avenue de Barque, which gave rise to a huge safety issue. A resident called me, and I sent an email, and within 24 hours, Mr Mayor, the stop was put back up, and even the stop line was painted. Kudos to your department. I know, I saw the emails as to how that was done. And that was really good work, we really appreciated it. Well, the action was taken very fast because otherwise police officers would be called in. I can say that those lies at the corner of Laurier and Laporte are beautiful, they're great. They don't work! Ah, didn't you tell me they did? I was afraid of that, but I had to say, "Congratulations." Now, now, it's working so well, it's working so well. But, but the question I have is this. The traffic is synchronized? Is synchronized right now? And it supposedly was going to be synchronized also with the Highway 17 traffic, but it has nothing to do with that. Well, I think it works well for pedestrians in any event, doesn't it? Yes. Yes. All right, Mrs Chalabois? Fine. Jean-Luc, everything's okay? Little pat on the back, never hurt anyone. All right then. Let's go on to adjournment. Adjournment called at 9:08 PM. Thank you very much, folks. Have a nice evening. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.